Good afternoon and welcome to the continuation of City Council's Budget Hearings. Today, we have with us the Office of Management and Department of Finance, Department of Law, and the Office of Management and Budget. We are starting today with the Department of Finance. Always joining with me is Bill Bannack, our able and excellent City Council Budget Director. He will give an overview of the department and the budget, and we will simply ask the Director and her staff, who's my favorite Director in the city, to... It's like my children. I teach these... I tell all my children they're my favorite. I have four children, and so I have four favorite kids. Bill?
Yes, thank you Reverend. The Department of Finance provides fiscal leadership for the city focused on long-term financial health while respecting the interests of its residents. It also carries an important responsibility to ensure all entrepreneurs, visionaries, and leaders have necessary services and infrastructure to... city infrastructure to thrive. As the City of Pittsburgh's primary revenue generator, the Finance Department is committed to excellence in financial management for its... for the city, its residents, and its businesses. The budgetary highlights this year for the Department of Finance, the total budget is $178,735,000. Nice chunk of change. There is an increase there of $8.7 million or a 5.2 percent increase. The total departmental budget, not including debt, pension, and the housing fund transfer, which is a bulk of the funds that are located in the department, that operating portion is $6,112,000. There's an increase of $325,000 from the 2019 budget or 5.6 percent. Total full-time positions in the Department of Finance are budgeted at $39.85, the same as 2019. That's a decrease of 33 employees since 2014. No major position changes of note. A small number of minor changes. Revenue Compliance and Analytics Manager was re-titled to remove compliance and decreased by $6,487. Senior Financial Analyst decreased to Financial Systems Analyst, a $2,500 savings. Tax Collection Compliance Officer changed to Tax Compliance Supervisor, a $7,200 increase. One of the five account clerks in the budget were decreased to a clerk two position for a $3,300 savings. Finance subclasses, not including pension, benefits, and debt, changed across 11 line items. Total increase to $278,000. Highlights include grants increasing by $500,000 for transferring vacant property expenses to the three taxing body trust fund. Computer maintenance decreased by $198,000 due to the consolidation of Finance's software programs, a nice money saver, which I'm sure you're going to talk about now. Professional Services was increased by $35,000 for the indirect cost allocation plan. Office supplies were decreased by $32,000. Department of Finance has one capital project, the Comprehensive Revenue Management System. $1,775,000 of 2020 Pago will be spent. $1.28 million of this is already approved by Resolution 724, which was effective November 6, 2019, as well as $37,200 last week. There is also a capital project under the URA from the Land Care Program of city-owned properties for $250,000. This project is supplemental to the vacant property management expenses in the three taxing bodies trust fund. Also included is the... what we used to call the non-departmental line items of debt and pension. The pension contribution for 2020 will be $51,519,000. There's an additional pension contribution, thanks to an ordinance passed by council that requires us to do as close to pay-go as we can, pay-as-you-go for our pension program. That amount of addition was $47,579,000, a total of approximately $98 million. There's $2 million for retiree contribution, stays the same as previous year. $80,000 for widow contribution, survivor contribution stays the same. Retired police officer, retired firefighter, and retired EMS employees all stay the same. The OPEB contribution, which is other post-employee benefits, which would mean retiree health care, specifically for the public safety unions, I believe all three now are under that category. Currently, that number is $5,226,000. We will have to see what happens after all the union information is in. The total pension costs then for 2020 will be $106,544,000. That's an increase of $5 million, which the... most of that money is on the additional pension fund contribution. Debt is also another issue, so to speak. If I can do a little pun there. The principal honor debt for 2020 will be $34,550,000. It's a $3.36 million or 10 percent increase in principal. The debt interest will be $21,529,000. That actually goes down by $12,736,000. So the total debt service this year for 2020 will be $56,79,000, $79,000, or a $3.35 million increase of 6.3 percent. As of June 30th, the pension fund was 61 percent funded or 38 percent excluding the parking asset, and that's the way the market is lately. That's going to fluctuate from day to day, apparently. The Department of Finance has several trust funds. One of the larger ones, of course, is the Three Taxing Bodies Trust Fund, which is held jointly by the school district and the county. Projected beginning balance is $1,061,000, half of the 2019 beginning balance. Anticipated 2020 revenue is $650,000, including a $500,000 transfer from the general fund. Twelve employees and 15 percent of the Finance Director budgeted in this trust fund. No salary or position changes. One non-salary change is a $200,000 decrease of property maintenance line item, which you see reflected going over to the URA and Pago funds. The Ashik Fund... trust fund balance is $470,000. The Fire Escrow balance, $886,000. Employee Health Care Program Trust Fund, current balance, $460,000. There's been no activity in that trust fund in over eight years. Various tax agency funds, tax refunds, $250,000. Tax refund school, there's a negative $33,000. Real estate tax refunds, it's listed as a $200,000 negative amount. Real estate tax refunds, school district, $266,000. And tax refunds to the Carnegie Library, there's a negative $38,400. The Department of Finance also helps oversee other post-employment benefits, as I explained, and the Comprehensive Municipal Pension Trust Fund, which oversees the investment of the municipal police and fire pension funds. Department of Finance is also responsible for the collection of all the revenues in the city, including the... except for the delinquent monies, including the real estate tax. The revenues are listed on the back flip side of this page, and I will just highlight a couple of these so not to read through the whole list. Total revenues projected are $608,235,885 for 2020. Total major tax revenues are $495,463,000. Licenses, permits, and the other major non-tax revenues, total $112,772,000, come up with that $608 million number. Of the tax revenue, the real estate tax is projected at $150 million, and that will include delinquent taxes collected as well. The earned income tax, $106 million is projected for 2020, and the payroll preparation tax, $71 million. One point that I always have concern about and had concern about over the past two years here is the collection of the parking tax, which seems to remain a little flatter than it had in previous years. And we also have the deed transfer tax, which is listed at $43,792,000. Part of that is due to an increase in that tax, an automatic increase in that tax of one-half of 1 percent for this year to help supplement the Housing Opportunity Fund. The deed transfer tax is listed as a normal growth item, but we need to keep our eye on that one because that's going to be dependent upon the real estate market. Other than that, I think I've covered all the different things we need to cover here.
Treasure Lanier.
Margaret Lanier, Director of Finance. Bill, thanks for the great introduction.
Thank you.
One issue that you did touch base on is the fact that we're down 34 people in the last several years, which is a lot. We now are looking at somewhere near 50 employees going into 2020. We continue to do more with less bodies, and the way we've been able to do that is through transition. We've combined a lot of our job descriptions in certain units. We have five different units in the Finance Department, and what we're going to do is we have a presentation prepared, and what we're going to do is go through each unit to show, you know, what's done in each unit. As you can see from the slide...
Do you have a copy for us?
The five units that we have... No, we didn't.
Thank you.
The five units that we have is the Administration and Treasury, the Real Estate, the Cash Management, the Business Intelligence, and the Tax Compliance Department. The first department... the first unit that we're going to talk about is the Administration and Treasury. Of course, the Administration is the unit that handles the pension funds. When this was prepared, the pension funds was up 3 percent in 2019, and that was as of the end of September. There was a pension meeting today, and we were told that the fund is up to 9.8 percent, which is great. So the pension is looking really good. We contributed $43 million over the minimum obligation for funding for the pension. We expanded the credit card program by 76 percent in the last three years, and we've completed 70 percent of Finance projects on time. Finance had 125 special projects in 2019, and a lot of those projects were like our policies and procedures and our projects that we were doing throughout the department. Jet Pay, we've extended Jet Pay. We're still working on DPW in the pools, but we do use the... provide mobile access for the pools. That's it. As we move along to the next unit, Tax Compliance, Sarah, introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Sarah Capps. I'm the Manager of Revenue and Analytics. I came aboard with the Finance team back in September. So far as for tax compliance, we were able to move... do a lot of things in-house with the unregistered business activities. Involuntary ET collections have increased by 2 percent. Increased non-filing letters activities up by 94 percent, and those are the letters we send out as far as tax compliant, late notices, et cetera. Non-filing cases are now auto-assigned to individual staff, and so they are then responsible for following up. It's no longer a manual system, and overall, we're above 5 percent of revenue on our forecast
My name is Narita Polanco, and I'm the operation manager for Finance. On a real estate unit, we have a focus on increasing accessibility on our data with the focus of creating more transparency in our processes. We have scanned 68 percent of our real estate data, finalized Phase One over a 3TB discovery process with a goal of implementing new processes and procedures. We are now in a planning stage to include abatement process into a new system, improve the GAAS connectivity to ensure that we get our county property data every month instead of every year, once a year, as we have it right now, and that will go live at the end of the month. Consolidated data into E-Property Plus to increase accuracy, response time, and accessibility for internal processes, which is currently happening... it was happening in two systems and now is in two one.
That brings us to the Cash Management Division, and I'm Jennifer Gula, the Assistant Finance Director. Actually, one of our biggest accomplishments was, over the past few years, we've closed all the lock boxes. The only one that actually remains now is EMS lockbox, and that exists specifically because of the security of HIPAA information for EMS billing purposes. But we now process all of the tax payments in-house, which has drastically reduced our banking fees. So as you can see, in 2015, we still had one partially active lockbox, and our banking fees were over $400,000. And over time, as we've closed them, it has slashed the banking fees to where this year we will be way under budget, and I don't even think we'll hit $50,000, and that was as of October. So it's a huge, huge cost savings to us, and we also actually had two scanning systems that are going to merge into one, which will actually be saving us as well on operational costs for running both systems. So... And just as a side note, most of that work, especially with the business tax processing, is really only done by three people, and they've increased the amount using these systems of payments that they're able to push through incredibly, so... And another thing that Cash Management is actually responsible for is our debt service payments. So as Bill mentioned, that they will increase, but they will increase based on a capital improvement plan over the next five years, expecting a $50 million borrowing. When we do borrowing, we do make sure that all of... what we want to do is keep within the parameter... parameters of our debt management policy, which we actually updated in 2017 while we were still under Act 47. So we carried a lot of those best practices over and still continue to use them and don't intend on them going away. But as you can see, even with current borrowing, we want to keep our debt expenditures under the 12 percent threshold, which we're clearly showing there.
The last unit for the Finance Department would be the Business Intelligence. In this unit's focus, this is where all the special projects start, and we focus on making sure we outline better business practices for our department. We're consolidating... we're working on now consolidating 11 databases into one enterprise system, and this is the new tax systems we are looking into implementation for 2020. Overall, the system maintenance versus the old system versus the new system will give us a savings of $849,000 in a five-year period. We increase... we want to increase enforcement cases per staff and their ability to increase that data integrity and security as we move forward. We also want to create online access for all users that includes our residents as well as our staff, provide adequate training to managers and staff, and integrate systems with other departments to directly impact tax compliance. So for 2020, we have a goal of being able to connect to other systems like the permitting and licensing system to increase our tax collection that way as well.
End of our presentation.
All right. Anything else you want to add, any of the members who are here? If not, we are joined by Councilwoman Darlene Harris. Darlene?
I guess I wanted to ask about... you were mentioning, since we went to the charge cards, who was that? How is that? Is it better that we're getting people to pay easier than it was before?
I think so, and I actually think that it's something that the public wanted as well. They want accessibility. They don't want to actually have to always come in and either... a lot of people have moved away from writing checks or even paying cash in person, and although we need to keep those options available to people, I think a lot... we do get a lot of response in every year, especially concerning property tax, you can see the increased usage over time from year to year as to how many credit card payments we get as opposed to checking cash.
I'd add to that, you know, it's the beginning of the year when the property taxes go out, you know, the holidays done pass, and a lot of people, you know, think it might be easier just to pay by credit card, and then when income tax time come, they just pay it off, you know? So it's... it had a great effect, you know? A lot of people use it.
That's good. I'm glad that worked out well. And the pension is up?
Yes.
Okay. More than even we thought it would be.
Yeah, we had a pension meeting this morning, and the... our pension advisor had told us that it's, you know, it's been up since the last figures I had was September, and he gave us through November, and it was 9.8 percent.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for all you do. There isn't a time that I haven't come to one of you that I've been very happy with your services to the City of Pittsburgh, so...
We thank you for your support.
And even as sick as you are, you're here today.
Dedication.
Well, she's just... I mean, she's sick.
Thank you very much. We're joined by Councilwoman Theresa Kelso.
I'm good. I'm listening.
All right. I want to... Bill?
Yeah, I just had just one quick question on the bond issue. We know the approximate timing of when we will be looking to go out to issue.
Probably early next year.
Early, so prior to March? And I just wanted to thank you as well as Director Lanier, as well as Mayor and the Controller and the other representatives on the municipal pension fund for taking such good care of it. There is a possibility that we should look at potentially re-authorizing the parking asset. That may help. We've gotten to a point now where it's sort of maximized the amount of money that we're able to account for, so to speak, on that as counting towards our liability. So we should pay attention to that. That'll be something that you will have to work with council with in the upcoming year or so, but it's something to keep on the radar and keep our eyes on the market and how that proceeds. So I do appreciate your work personally over the years as well, too, on that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just have one more. I wanted to ask you about the bonds. Are they pushed back for the interest or...
You mean, how are they amortized?
Right.
So the way they're normally structured is... it depends on how much we're borrowing.
Right.
And we amortize them to where we want to pay off most of the principal within like a certain period of time and the interest. So we want to have the interest decrease as the amortization schedule goes down.
Okay. So...
Council passed an ordinance a couple of years ago that essentially... borrowing ordinance that essentially gives us a level debt service.
Right.
At a minimum. We try to do a level principal, but that's not always obtainable.
Right.
Which will... which ends up you pay more principal upfront, whatever. But level debt service keeps it the same every year, so your principal payment and your interest will...
Okay. And that's still going on like that?
It's still going on, and there's no attempt to change it.
Change it?
Yep.
Good. Thank you.
The other conversation.
Yeah, just real quick, I'm sorry. First of all, thank you all for your work, and, you know, we just talked with Aaron Pickett a little bit today about real estate, and I would thank him for his work as well. But I've always said, you know, one of the things that bothered me was the taxes that are coming through with the, you know, the library tax, the park tax, and those are things that we all love, but there's... I think people would love to donate to those things. And I've asked before if could we put something on the back of the tax, or is there some way to take even a donation online? So if people want to donate to parks, or they want to donate to police, or fire, or EMS, or some kind of specific project in the city, is there some way to do that? And would that be maybe not even worth the effort?
Yeah, I'm not sure. That, to me, that would be something that I would have to talk to legal about because when you're asking for a donation, I don't know whether we can actually put that on the bill.
So do now... are there things now, people, like when people donate to horses, or money for horses, or different things for the city, for the police, there's always a mechanism in place for those donations? I'm just... I just... something I'd like for you to look into because I'm tired of seeing people being forced to pay when I think people would willingly pay for some of these things, and maybe even more so than they are being forced to pay.
Councilwoman, previously, prior to Jordan taking over the earned income tax collections, we had put on the bill for donations to the Pittsburgh Promise.
Right.
I don't know. I think we may have other regulations regarding real estate.
Yeah, I believe there is.
But that could possibly be worked out with Jordan as well, too, for city residents. I'm not sure.
Could you look into that? And then let me know if there's something we need to do or could do, because I just think I would like to see people willingly donate instead of being forced to donate to something that they either don't use, don't care about, or can't afford. Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say, Margaret, I am, as you know, I believe you're a treasurer to the city. Your years of service and your insight is far superior. You certainly are also resident in my council district, but... but beside that, really, you have been one of my favorite people to work with and have always been, right?
Respected.
And I just want to thank you for your gift of service to the city and your love for it to continue this work. So thank you very much. Staff, we like you, too. Thank you for coming. I will move on to my next group, which is...
I don't know if I like you, but I appreciate you.
...which is Department of Law, actually.
Hope you feel better.
Hey, Councilman. The Department of Law provides legal advice and services as counsel to the city departments, mayor, city council, and various government units. It represents the city in all legal aspects of its daily governmental operations. It also represents the city in high-profile cases significantly impacting public policy and city residents' quality of life. The Department of Law operates as a quality, proactive boutique law firm, attracting talented professionals from the private sector with impeccable integrity. The Ethics Board is also... do you want to take them separate?
Ethics Board, are you here? You can come forward, too. We'll take you together.
The Law Department also oversees the Ethics Hearing Board. The mission of the Ethics Hearing Board is to promote public trust and confidence in public service by fostering integrity and impartiality within city government. The changes in the Law Department this year, there are highlights. Total budget in the Department of Law, $7,618,000. It's a decrease of $361,000 or 4.5 percent. Total full-time positions, 34.5. That's an increase of three, plus funding for part-time positions. Salary and position changes of note, deputy solicitor position removed, $110,888. Associate Solicitors increased from three to four. That's a $104,000 difference. Three additional pay rates for assistant solicitor, one's added, three added to the new pay rate, one removed from the old pay rate. Net increase of two assistant solicitors and $167,623. Legal secretaries increased... Legal secretaries increased from five to six, $39,000. Department of Law non-salary subclasses changed across nine lines for a net decrease of $843,000, $45,000. The most significant changes are judgments were decreased by $900,000. Legal fees decreased by $295,000. Computer maintenance increased by $200,000. And court-related fees were increased by $50,000. The Law Department has no capital projects, nor does it have any trust funds. Law Department no longer has any revenues as docket fees and costs, which was eliminated in last year's budget. The Ethics Hearing Board budget is a total of $172,000. It's a decrease of approximately $6,900 or 4%. Investigator positions retitled as legal investigator, no salary change. Four minor subclasses all changed less than $650 for a net change of zero. The Ethics Board Trust Fund was closed two years ago.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm solicitor, actually.
Thank you. As you know, the Law Department provides legal advice to the mayor, city council, and cities, and the city's numerous departments and occasionally commissions. Throughout that process, we defend the city in hundreds of lawsuits. We review and draft hundreds of contracts. We also just provide general compliance advice regarding a variety of municipal matters. We litigate code enforcement cases and we also represent the city before the Civil Service Commission. We represent the city before labor arbitrators and, um... Of note, over the past couple of years, we have taken over the defense of individual named police officers absent a conflict of interest in-house, reducing the need for outside counsel. So, those are some of the, the areas that we focus on. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the proposed budget.
So, I'm just going to say that, thank you. I know that I give you a hard time sometimes, but I do appreciate the, the work that you do. And I appreciate that you're doing it with a very small staff and that there's a lot of work. And I do hear a lot of times that something's caught up in law. And so, and when I see a reduction, you know, a decrease in, in the budget, it concerns me because I think that's probably a department that makes everything else in the city move. And so, we probably could use more help.
Right, well, notwithstanding that decrease, we are asking for two full-time new attorney positions and one new legal secretary position.
So, we'd just be more efficient?
Yes, we're being more efficient, um, in terms of other areas. But in terms, we, obviously, we want to be as effective and efficient as possible. So, we are seeking authority to bring in an additional... One attorney will focus on litigation and one attorney will focus more on municipal issues. So, the contracts, the general advice, and things like that.
And I want to thank you for the opinion for the parks tax.
Oh, sure.
So, I mean, I was actually kind of surprised by it, to be honest with you. I thought it was very kind of neutral. I mean, but pretty much giving counsel, a lot of authority. So, I thought that was good. But I still have concerns, you know, I mean, obviously. I just, I felt like the way the whole thing played out was just unethical, to be honest with you. So, um, so I, I have concerns with that. I do want to say that if there's some way that the Law Department would be strengthened and to get, start moving some of the things that, that need to be moved in the city, that would be good to know that, you know, these positions will be able to... You think you're confident these positions will be the ones that will do it? Adding these and making some changes?
We have a couple more to fill in our, in our general complement just because we've had a lot of turnover the past year.
I would only say, you really have had a lot of turnover. People come in and I'm like, oh my God, it's another person. It's just so much. It's actually too much, to be honest with you.
I have to say, I have to thank it. The Law Department is amazing. It's an amazing staff, amazing group of attorneys and staff people.
I'm always happy to see you and John because to me, that's some institutional knowledge left. And I do think that, you know, when we're hiring new people, that's great. But you better remember that their institutional knowledge means something, especially in terms of the Law Department. So, um, there's a lot of benefit to keeping and retaining some of those attorneys.
Want to keep everyone we can?
Yeah.
You know, things change and so some turnover is, is, uh, expected. But we're, we're very lucky with the staff. I, I feel grateful to work with the people that I work with in the Law Department. She is.
Okay. Now, who is the person who's assigned to watch our meetings? Because we had heard that it was Kelly for a long time.
So, Kelly was, um, the liaison for a while. Currently, it's Wendy Kobe.
So, now it's Wendy.
Right, and so Wendy watches...
Oh, yeah, I'm happy to see Wendy too.
Yeah, Wendy watches the, every Wednesday, she watches all the standing committees. And then the other attorneys in the Law Department actually take turns being parliamentarian for the legislative sessions. And then as questions come up, Wendy and our eye will assign them to different attorneys. So, Wendy doesn't personally handle all... Kelly handled more of the questions as a true liaison. But the way it's working now, Wendy is more of a coordinator. She handles many of the more difficult issues and others we, we might assign to other, to other attorneys as well.
So, I'm just going to say, I appreciate, you know, the help that we get from there. But I mean, we were always told that somebody watches our meetings and somebody comes up.
We do.
And somebody, you know, can be on call like that. But sometimes it's like a little bit slow on the response. But, but I think...
We, we do try. There's generally someone watching and...
Well, just like we all do in the back of our offices. I mean, even though you don't see people here, they're in the back watching.
Sure.
And so, um, yeah, I'm sure that you have people doing multiple things, you know, at the same time.
But just so you know, people are actually assigned. There's a calendar. And so, every, there is an assignment for every, every hearing.
Okay, that's good to know. Were you going to say something?
Yeah, just to clarify, for the solicitor, uh, there's a decrease in the budget this year. That, the majority of that was in the judgment line item. And that's because there was an anticipation of a couple of larger settlements that, that may have happened or were anticipated to happen in 2019. And I believe that's probably the majority of the reason that you see that $900,000 decrease. Typically, the judgment line item was between $2 and $3 million.
So, I'm curious, with all the, um, changes we've had in the police department, have you seen a decrease in complaints against the police in terms of law? Or claims?
So, some suits are brought against the city and some suits name specific officers. And I'd have to go back and actually count. I, I, I'm not, I don't think there's an increase. I can't say whether it's been fairly constant or whether there's actually a decrease without checking for you.
I'm wondering if the police community relationship building is having an effect on the dollar amount as well as, you know, what it's doing in the community. So, okay. All right, that's it for me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your work too.
Harris?
Okay, uh, actually, Bill answered the question that I had, so, uh, that was the big one. And, uh, yeah, I just couldn't understand the decrease and where that was coming from.
So, what, I think it's a product of some of the cases. And then there were, there was a structured settlement that's going to be paid out every three years. And this year, there is still part of that payment, but it's a smaller amount as well.
You don't see any larger cases coming up?
Not to that extent, but, you know, we, we have lawsuits that we're, we never know.
Okay. Other than that, I don't think I have any other questions. Oh, Wendy, um, doesn't she still do negotiations too?
She does. She does labor nu, she's the head of the Labor and Employment Group, but she also...
Watches the meetings when she can.
She's parliamentarian. She watches them on Wednesdays or someone would sub for her. Yeah.
Because it seems like it was a busy, busy time for the negotiations.
It has been, yes.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, Wendy, I'm, uh, as you know, I'm a fan of yours and a fan of your leadership. No, you're not, Wendy. I'm a fan of the solicitor's office and Wendy. I'm a fan of the solicitor's leadership and you were talking about Wendy, so her... She's council liaison, it's her name stuck in my head. But what I want to think about, and I'm just saying this publicly, but over the years, council has thought about what it would look like to have a solicitor that we had on the floor. I don't think we need a full-time person, but I've always had the opinion, and I've had this conversation with George Spector, the whole idea of having a person who is in the Law Department. Probably even, we wouldn't need, we wouldn't even need a full-time person, but maybe even a part-time person who was, who was, who, who, who we had some more regular access to. Always interests me. That idea interests me. And so, I may at some point come back, have that conversation in the new year, but not certainly now. But, um, something to talk about, think about. But again, um, thank you always for your leadership. And, um, the Ethics Bureau, we're trying to, um, stay on the good side of, of the Ethics Board. Anything you want to add? Anything? If not, thank you very much. We are moving on to our next and I think last department.
And a big one.
Which is the Office of Management and Budget.
The Office of Management and Budget's mission is to ensure the effective and efficient use of resources in order to sustain the delivery of quality services to the residents of the city of Pittsburgh. The Office of Management and Budget serves as a strategic business partner to promote actions to achieve the city's priorities, establish and maintain sound fiscal policies, deliver a clear and accurate picture of the city's current and future financial position, improve the efficiency, effectiveness, and integration of the city's financial management processes, and provide excellent customer service to internal and external customers. OMB, as we call it, is divided into a number of core teams. Administration, the capital, fleet, and asset management. Capital, uh, Community Development Block Grant Program. Operating, grants and special revenue. And of course, our favorite thing to buy things, procurement. The budget for, uh, the Office of Management and Budget, which includes fleet and some other things. The total budget is $17,194,000, decrease of $160,000 for this year, so minor. Total full-time positions are 24, plus one part-time position in interns. Salary and position changes of note, one senior budget analyst is added at $75,000. Senior Asset Management Analyst is removed at $70,000, $75,329. One of two procurement coordinators increased to contract administrator, $6,953. Fleet contract administrator decreased by $10,486. Non-salary subclasses have changed across 14 lines for a net decrease of $221,000 or 1.5%. Highlights include professional services decreased by $239,888,000. $100,000 of the removed funds was the 2019 attempted hiring consultant for branding services. Reminder there. Property Services Management increased by $204,000 related to the first vehicle service fleet contract. Parts increased by $54,000 due to the first vehicle fleet contract. Fuel was decreased by $163,000. Machinery equipment was increased by $126,000. And land and buildings was decreased by $78,000 due to the removal of the Ross Street building expenses in the budget. OMB has, uh, trust funds and grants. Facilities Trust Fund, current balance $6,600. South Side Parking Enhancement District, President Kraus isn't here to talk about that right now. But, uh, current balance is $207,000. Parks Trust Fund to be determined, but may include OMB as the signatory, as they oversee all the trust funds. PPC, Frick Environmental Center, grant from DCED, remaining balance $240,000, $5,000. There are no OMB trust funds or grants, although all 75-plus trust and agency funds are reviewed by OMB and Grants Division. And 80-plus active grants are housed within OMB. The OMB also has the ELA within its budget as well too. The Capital Budget Division of OMB oversees all capital projects. There is one capital project specific to OMB in ELA, and that's the capital equipment acquisition, which, uh, we can invite those folks to the table briefly here, um, that are here for the board. Capital equipment, this is an increase from $5 million that has been budgeted previously in 2018 and 2019. Not inclusive of various grants the A may receive, nor purchases paid for the general fund or trust funds. I think the total budget, which we'll see in a minute, is over $8 million for the proposed plan, or acquisition plan for 2020. The Community Development Block Grant Division was transferred to OMB in 2018 and continues to be responsible for CDBG administration. $230,000 increased by $95,000. CDBG personnel, $1.1 million, the same as in previous years. Community-based organizations, ACBO, $500,000 was decreased. Emergency Services Grant, $1.15 million is similar to last year. Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS, $950,000 similar to last year. These are pass-through grants. Also, the Urban League Housing Counseling, $100,000, the same as past years. As well as administering all community development block grant dollars in all capital projects, including council's ULO. Total budgeted allocation for 2020 is $13.5 million. It's the same that was budgeted in 2019, but $340,000 less than we actually received. Total full-time positions within the CDBG Division, 10. Salary and position changes of note within CDBG-funded division. Two of the five senior planners downgraded from Planner 2s, um, downgraded to Planner 2s. $12,415 total savings. Part-time outreach and education specialist was removed for savings of $15,100. I don't know if we want to talk about the five-year plan at all within here, but that's always up for grabs as well too. If we can take any concerns and questions of the Office of Management and Budget, then we can move on to the ELA.
Hi, Kevin Paulus, Director, Office of Management and Budget.
Jennifer Rosinger, Assistant Director, OMB for Procurement.
David Hutchinson, Assistant Director for Capital and Asset Management.
Uh, and if I could start, I would like to thank all of the staff that we have in OMB. They're a great group of individuals. They're very dedicated. They work very hard, day in, day out, to, you know, touch every part of the city and try to aid in whatever we can. The, uh, the operating budget and the grants, who I oversaw for most of this year. Jen's leadership with the procurement portion of the department. Dave's leadership of the CDBG and Capital Budget Group, as well as Whitney Finstrom, who leads the CDBG team. And also Brandon Walton for his leadership with the fleet group as well. And at this time, we'll open it up for any questions.
Well, because I'm going to be quick, I'm sure. Um, I just wanted to ask you about the community-based organization, the ACBO funding, the decrease of $200,000. And this year, it was allocated through council, through a process with council and the working with the administration. Are we going to do it the same way next year? Is that a different way than... Do you know, I'm not sure who, who...
No, you're correct. There's $500,000 in next year's budget for ACBO. And so, we're currently reviewing best practice that other cities are utilizing to give money to sub-grantees. It's a, the Pittsburgh way of doing it's very unique. So, we're doing a little bit more research, trying to come back with any changes of the structure that might happen.
Okay, and then, um... And the Parks Trust Fund, um, I think that we're still, council's still deciding what we're going to do with that. And, um, yeah, we got an opinion from the Law Department, which was encouraging to me, to be quite honest, and encouraging to me for those residents that weren't supportive of it when they voted. So, I think that the, that, that's still a process that we have to, to address. I'm going to wait a second and look over some of this and then I'll come back with second round with questions. But I want to thank you all for your work and I think that you've, everyone over here, I know, keeps you busy, doing a lot of stuff. Me, it was with ACBO and the park tax probably will be. So, so just thank you for your work. I'm very happy to see a District 2 resident leading this team. I just want to say Sheridan Westwood resident, both, I mean, so born and raised in Sheridan, lives in Westwood.
Okay. You wanted to ask about the CDBG too. Is, you're saying there's a change?
This year, there's $500,000 for ACBO.
Right. And when that, that's being spent other than by the mayor or council? Say asphalting, okay? Do those areas that are CDBG... okay? Do those areas that are CDBG first get, you know, the asphalting done as much as everyone else, and then that lays upon it as extra?
We actually skipped paving in the last two budgets for CDBG. That was directly from public feedback. People thought that that should just be something we're doing anyway. And while there's a lot of justifications for using CDBG funds for repaving, we agree with them. So we really focused on trying to use CDBG funds either for sub-grantees, doing important public service projects, or for projects that are really creating new infrastructure or changing the service abilities of existing infrastructure. So
Such as?
Additions to buildings, sidewalk gaps, big upgrades to parks like the, like in Homewood with Willie Stargell Field. We have, I think, two and a half million dollars in CD funds towards the Homewood Field renovation. And for us, that's, that's the kind of impact we need to be seeing with, with federal dollars.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm not sure how it was going before, but that is supposed to be over and above for any of the CDBG areas. Then, what surprised me is you're down on gas, or was it? What do you think the reason of that is?
So this year, as part of our ELA plan, we have decided to purchase hybrid, hybrid police vehicles. So being that they operate different than gasoline vehicles, we would anticipate to see a reduction in fuel. So that can be accounted for that as well.
Have you put in any electrical outlets yet?
For the police vehicles, they're hybrids. They're not, they are not electrical.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes.
But other departments?
Yeah, but other departments certainly do, yes. And we, and we also have an allotment of money for electrical vehicle infrastructure as part of next year's ELA budget. So we do have some funds earmarked for that as well.
Are you counting that so that we could see if it's an increase or decrease as, you know, putting in and utilizing the electric?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, obviously, we have to always keep an eye on the fuel budget. It varies year to year with prices as well, so.
I guess when you talk fuel, you're, you know, you want to see the whole picture instead of just half of the picture.
Right. And the entire budget of fuel is housed in OMB. So that's something that we currently monitor. Like you said, it is a slight decrease, but it's slight that. If we begin to see more, more of a reduction in fuel, then obviously, we will adjust our budget accordingly. But as of now, it is slight because we want to make sure that we are going to get that return, or that reduction before we just reduce the budget with hopes to see savings and not actually realize it.
Yeah, because if you don't look at it both together, you're not going to be able to really see the big picture.
Right.
One quick thing to add that I would personally, you know, while it's a conservative reduction, we have through this past year really seen a lot of effort with Brandon's work and the cooperation of the departments. They have really been very good at decreasing the usage of the retail fuel cards and using the fuel at our pumps instead. Brandon's done a really good job of keeping our fuel islands moving, and we, we expect that improving. So that is also contributing to the decrease. And I would just like to thank the departments for really trying, you know, being diligent and helping us. But basically, Public Safety are the only ones that are allowed to use retail stations like GetGo. But they have really done a good job at, at really being better at that and using the city sites, which are tax-free and discounted rates. So that really helps, too.
Okay. Are they only using the cards when they have to?
Off hours. And again, Public Safety is the only one, only permitted to do that.
I believe we also approved a new vendor for our cards as well, too. May see additional savings and control.
With a better discounted rate and rebates and, you know, more controlled system.
Is that where you see the little fuel guy?
Yeah, the fuel master, the little picture, yeah.
Right.
On the, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right. So we will have new systems at all of our fuel islands on the city that are going to be up more often. And the software with the new company is much more, you're able to customize it, you're able to set more restrictions to types of fuel. So there's a lot more controls available in this new system, I think, that will help control some of that as well, and help.
Then here's the Park Fund, but we won't talk about that right now, will we? I mean, the parks are going to be funded no matter what, right?
Right. I mean, we, the Parks and Recreation Department is funded, as well as GPW. We're always looking to try to help them out in other ways and in more ways, but try to do the best with what we can.
That was, sounded like a political answer. That was a good one, though.
He's learning. That's all I have right now. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, I just have a question about the Hunger Funds. You know, it funds the money the council gives to the Hunger Funds, funds the produce to the people and some of the programs that, through the food bank. And so I know Council President Kraus wants to do an amendment, and I think he's working with the administration. But I was wondering if we could use the ACBO funds for something like that, instead of some of the things we are using it for.
Yeah, ACBO's a Pittsburgh creation, and it's, it's really just unique to this council. So if that's the will of council, yeah, that can be switched.
I'm just saying, it might be easier than to try searching for something somewhere else. I don't know. I mean, it's up to the administration and, you know, Council President Kraus and you all to work together on it. But I just want to put that idea out there that I'd rather see that funded than not. And the other thing is the transfer to the Early Childhood Community Facilities Fund, that, the two million dollars in there. And I don't know who oversees that. But I can tell you that I've mentioned to Director Hisrick, I've mentioned to the mayor during his hearing the other day, and I'm going to mention it to you, is that the women's, and we've actually talked with Tiffany. And one of the things the women's group would like to see happen is there was a state mandate that daycares now have to have a pull-down emergency thing for fires, because of whatever hap, the fire that happened in an area with five children were, you know, were killed. And so they want to address that and avoid that here locally. So they want to have that pull-down feature. And I don't know how much time they have to install them or whatever. But I mean, I'd rather have it more quickly. But one of the obstacles we notice is that some of the daycares, one, don't have the, the funding to put them in, to install them, and two, some of them don't own the buildings. So we would like to see some program put in place where council, the Women's Caucus can work with the administration to put some kind of grant program in place to help those people to stable, to, to make those daycares as safe as possible. And so I just want to put that out there for, for that funding as well. And that's it for me.
And we thank you for your professionalism. We thank you for your work, Mr. Bennet.
Yes, we do have the Equipment Leasing Authority as well, too.
So we will go right to them. You can remain, or you can leave. It's your choice. All right, the?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for your work.
We're out of here. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
If I could just note, I really am happy that Kevin was chosen to be Budget Director this year. Worked with him in the past. He's extremely professional, very knowledgeable. So I do appreciate his work, and we work very well together, along with, with Mike and Dave Hutchinson, who just left, as well as Jennifer as well, too.
Which is a great team.
We have the Equipment Leasing Authority with us. The Leasing Authority is tasked with purchasing equipment, vehicles, heavy equipment for the city. It is a separate board. On the board is Jennifer Persutti, Guy Costa, myself, President Kraus, and Wendell Hesrich is, has been appointed. The total budget this year for the Equipment Leasing Authority, if I can find it, is, it's going to be a total of eight million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars coming from various funds. Of course, we mentioned the amount coming from the capital budget, which is both Pago and bond, no bond funds yet, and police operating funds. Police operating funds, one point eight million dollars, we had discussed during the police budget. There's also three hundred thousand dollars coming out of the Police Secondary Employment Trust Fund. Those funds are for the rental of vehicles when folks.
Of vehicles.
Yes. You have movies, you have other things. It's one of the charges that are put forth for the wear and tear on the vehicles as well, too. So that's part of the charges that go in there. The Special Events Trust Fund also, who utilizes vehicles and such as well, too, is contributing five hundred thousand dollars. And the ELA capital, as I mentioned before, given by the city, is five million, six hundred and seven thousand dollars for that total of eight million, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars. And if that's what you'd like to say anything, since I'm
My name's Jennifer Persutti.
Brandon as well.
Absolutely. My name's Jennifer Persutti. I'm the Chair of the Equipment Leasing Authority. And before I pass the mic to Brandon, I just want to, again, take the opportunity to thank the OMB staff that support the ELA and the city's fleet operations. A special thanks to Brandon Walton and Jamie Jones, Peter McDevitt, Kim Osterman, and our ELA Solicitor, Jim Klaas.
Brandon Walton, Fleet Services Manager for the city. And I work really closely with the ELA and the department.
Cyrus.
Yes, back to the Police Secondary Employment. What do they rent the vehicles for? How much?
So when, so when there are special events, maybe a Steelers game or a Pirates game, and they need additional security, the Police Secondary Trust Fund supports not only the officers' salary time, but also those vehicles that the officers use to, to man those events.
So how much? We, we don't use, there, that's actually secondary employment?
That's correct.
That's not our officers that are actually on duty?
That's right. That's through the CYA.
You sure they're all?
I'm sorry?
Are you sure they're all on secondary? The ones that are bringing the traffic through? Because they seem to be the ones on that shift.
It might be a mix. But I can tell you that the vehicle costs that we collect from third parties do go into this trust fund, and they support additional vehicles for public safety fleet. And it's not only police officers, the secondary, or the Special Events Trust Fund is also supported through.
How much do they rent the secondary for secondary employment? The reason I'm asking this is because I was the one that set it up in the first place. And I guess you see too much money in there, but you never know when you're going to have a lawsuit or other things that are going to come up. So I just asked a controller about this, too. I would like to know, you know, what has actually been taken out of there and for what for the last years after council actually put it into the budget. And when they say renting the police cars, I'm asking how much?
Director.
Counselor, if I could jump in. So all of those funds are segregated and within that special revenue account. Like Jen mentioned, anytime a third party pays for secondary employment, the vehicle, the vehicle money that is listed on the ELA budget is part of a fee, if you will. So we collect fees that are broken up within the special revenue account, and our office would be happy to get you that breakdown.
Would you please?
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I think I've asked that of a couple of different groups that were here already, but I'm trying to find out just what is all coming out of that fund, because it was supposed to be for anything such as if they rip their pants, or they, their badge comes off, you know, just all kind of different things if they're utilizing something during that time. So I, I really want to see what's curious.
We can get that to you, and I'd be happy to sit down and explain it.
And how much actually is, is coming in a year for the year since it started? Can you?
Absolutely.
Get that together? Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I just have a, well, a question about the inspector sedans for department permit license and inspections. And I thought that they just bought a whole fleet of cars and that wasn't included?
Right. And we've been cycling out the old 2010s as they become due for retirement.
Their fleet is forty-six in total. Forty-six inspector sedans. The majority of them are 2010s and 2011s. So we're trying to get them on a good cycle of, you know, four to eight vehicles per year.
Okay. So I just had, I just didn't know the necessity of those right now, that's all. Especially since they're making sure so many people are out on the streets. I didn't know. And then the, that's for PL and I. And then the transit vans, the fifteen-passenger one for Parks and Rec and the minibus. I just want to make a statement about this. It really is concerning to me that we buy these vehicles, and one of the biggest obstacles we have in our city is getting kids and seniors to and from the programming that we offer. And yet, we buy these vans, which should be used for that transportation of people, and yet, we never have. I've never seen them for any times that we've needed them. I've never seen them on our side of town to, to transport people. And I've never, not seen them in other places either. And so I, I don't know. And matter of fact, I called one time to see if we could help get kids transported, because we have a Salvation Army in our area. We have a community center in our area. We have, but we have seventeen neighborhoods, and they're so spread out. But getting people to and from those places, I have to often call churches and ask them to help use their vans, which then they have to obtain the insurance and make sure they have a licensed driver. And that's not always the case. It's just too much work. And we're, I just really would like to see us purchase a few good, solid pieces of equipment for Parks and Rec and make sure we hire a driver who can help transport people to and from some of these events. I know we've done it before in Northview Heights, getting kids to ball fields. And we've done that before. That was even prior to my election. But I don't even know if they do that anymore, to be honest with you. But I want to see it more in the neighborhoods. And it's a concern to me that we're, that we're spending all this money. And, I mean, it's probably so much cheaper than to buy, than to build a new community center, or to open another community center, or to do some of the things that we're doing, is to get people to the existing resources. So I just want to put that out there. I think that that's a concern for me. That's it. That's it for me.
Again, thank you, Ms. Cyrus.
Yeah. I just wanted to go down the list here. The unmarked police vehicles. You have, what money does that come out of?
So the, the marked patrol vehicles?
Unmarked.
Unmarked.
That's the one, the unmarked, the police vehicles will come out of the police operating budget. So that's already budgeted in the police operating budget. They are both, they're all marked vehicles.
So you don't count any of those?
You're speaking about the unmarked vehicles that?
We're not purchasing any unmarked vehicles this year, if that's what you're asking. That's, there, there's none on there because there's no need this year for.
Well, if there is a need for them.
Well, based on, based on the current numbers, the police are switching to a motor pool plan for their unmarked fleet. So until they adjust their numbers based on that motor pool, they, they wanted to purchase.
Except for narcotics, too?
Their vehicles come out of a different fund. It's not, those aren't.
You're speaking about the proper cars?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to find out. They just come out of the police. They don't come out of anything. Okay. Okay. I wanted to find out about that. Yeah. Let me just run down here. I knew there was. The, the one concern I have is the same as Councilwoman Smith. When we lost our, we were down to two senior centers. The van was supposed to be going to each of the neighborhoods, inconvenient places, to pick up seniors, to take them to the senior center over in Bright Heights. That hasn't happened. And that's what was told to the people that we're going down to, especially the ones that they were closing up down at the old library.
So we did have some issues with some, some of the minibuses this year. One was actually. One was actually pulled out of service and we did put one in service this year. Operationally, I can't speak to what they're using them for, but that's what we're being told therefore. And the van specifically was mentioned for the children's programs over the summers.
Okay, so I guess I should talk to the director in order to find out what's going on there because, I mean, with the hills and valleys in my district, it's, it's hard for those seniors if they're, you can't take a bus to the senior center, it's still open. So the only transportation they would have is if a van came around. And the van couldn't just make one stop in a neighborhood because of the hills and the valleys, it's very, you know. It would be very hard to try to have them walk the hills. But there is at this time only one. They talked about redoing Cowie Getman, which is up on Troy Hill, and that would take care of Spring Hill, Spring Garden, Spring Hill. So you'd have some of the hills taken care of, but you still have the rest that have to get to one or the other if that one opens, but there's only one right now. So there's, there's not much functioning for, for the seniors in that area if they don't drive, and a lot of them don't. Some of them are up to 101 years old. You want to keep getting them out. And the children should be, should be able to head to mall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have two more questions. Can we see a copy of the list of requests from the various folks for the, what actually they requested and what they were granted? You know, I'd like to see the difference. And then will this, will the committee change at all since there's a new Chief Operations Officer? Will that person also have a place or will, and Jen, you left too, right?
I have, yes, I'm no longer an employee for the city, although the city's fleet contract does support PWSA fleet purposes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there'll be some changes to address some of the changes in the committee itself. I mean, not that I want anyone gone, I just want to know if you're going to add some people, that's all.
Yeah, sure.
And our council president will be changing, too.
Yes.
And that's usually a point, yeah. So there's a lot of changes, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, just, yeah, just as a board member, I just have one quick comment on here. First off, the purchase of the hybrid police cars, I think that's an excellent move for us. I'd like to see all 32. I'm going to be lobbying for that at the meeting tomorrow. I think there's enough funding within there. Just to, as a reminder, those 16 vehicles, purchasing them from an environmental aspect, will put 1.4 million pounds of carbon less carbon in the air if we purchase those 16 additional hybrid police cars. So altogether, by doing the 32, we're taking out 2.4 or 2.8 million pounds of carbon from the air as well as the fuel savings. Not only do you see additional fuel savings, you also see savings with the hybrid vehicles in the brakes, the time in service, and they're actually faster this, according to the Michigan State Police, they actually have better, better speed, zero to 60 and all.
I just wonder the pollution that the trains bring through because they're talking about, no, they're talking about doubling and tripling them coming through the city of Pittsburgh.
We can control what we can control, and I'm glad that the mayor has, has made this commitment to hybrids, how many we get, hopefully we get all 32 here. There may be some other outside issues on delivery and such, whether to get them or not, but.
I'd just say, I think that we've also had some conversations, I've heard people complaining because they said, are logos changing on the, on the vehicles, on the police vehicles? We're getting silver vehicles and, you know, just all kinds of conversations happening. And I've heard, I've heard some of it internally, so I know some of it's reality, but I would like to make sure that if we're going to have votes on taxes and other things like that, I mean, I'd like to hear from the public about what they feel like about the logos and stuff. So before we do any kind of changing, I'm going to say, I'm going to call for a public hearing.
Yeah, just some information, when you change a color, for example, the change from the current white we have to a silver, those paint matches sometimes go up in cost as well, too. So when a car's in an accident, which our cars get banged up a lot, those costs also go up. Not only to say that rebranding an entire, entire fleet of vehicles will be very costly as well, too. And I would hope that that, that would come to, to council in some form or manner if we're going to make that kind of expense.
I do appreciate the need for branding and all that stuff, but I mean, I feel at this point, we should slowly do it or something, or come up with something that where the communities, there's some public input.
Yeah, I think recently the state police had gone to silver, but I think that's some of the complaints we hear from folks in my business.
I don't have a complaint, I just, I mean, I'm just saying, we need to make sure the public has a say. I mean, we give them a say on everything, I mean, too much sometimes because some of the people we're hearing, some of the people we're hearing from aren't the people that are, some of the people we're hearing from are not the most informed residents. And so I think it'd be great to hear from people that actually do know some of the stuff, too. But I mean, I like hearing from everybody, but I want to hear.
I just, I'd like to add.
On this issue, I want to hear.
I'd like to add, it's been an honor to serve on the Equipment Leasing Authority. I've been there as council's budget director, it's one of the.
Very good.
One of the positions there, but I've been there since 2007, when we first started talking about having a fuel efficiency policy, and now we're finally getting there. And I think that's one of the other reasons for the reduction of fuel is thanks to our fine staff and just, and past staff, but Brandon's doing an excellent job down there. When we buy newer vehicles, thanks to the Obama administration and some of the fuel efficiency standards that were raised, we, we start to save fuel all over the place, you know, sort of save those costs.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank, well, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you all.
In closing, I want to thank you for your service, although my interaction with the fleet vehicles has been limited, has been outstanding and excellent. They've always went out of their way to accommodate whatever I've asked or had need for, and I want to thank you publicly for your service. Now that concludes today's budget hearings. We will resume tomorrow, I believe, at 10 o'clock with the Department of Public Works. We will now entertain a motion to recess. Second?
Second.
On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in recess, thank you very much.